And can we have the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yep, we got it.
Councilmember Holland.
Here.
Councilmember DeGolia. I'll note for the record that Councilmember Widmer has an excused absence. Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you.
So I believe we have some presentations.
We do.
Peninsula Clean Energy. Is that going to be on Zoom or?
Yes, Sean's joining us via Zoom. Give me one moment to give her the floor.
Good evening, everyone. I'm still trying to access video.
You should be good to do that now.
Okay, let me give it a try. Here we go. All right.
Hi, Sean.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. I want to first apologize for not being there in person. I had every intention of doing so until I double-checked my COVID status and this morning and it had come roaring back. I think that's called a Pax Lovid rebound or something. I don't know. But anyway, it sent me home yet again. But I feel fine and I'm delighted that you were able to accommodate me by Zoom. So thank you for that. As noted, my name is Sean Marshall. I am the relatively new Chief Executive Officer of Peninsula Clean Energy, a post that I've held since last July when our founding CEO retired, Jan Pepper, and I'm happy to say that she's doing very well in retirement and sends her best. Before I get started, I would like to acknowledge my colleague, our Director of Government Affairs, Mark Hirschman, who I believe is in the audience in front of you and brought some packets. So thank you, Mark, for representing tonight. I appreciate it. I also want to acknowledge Councilmember DeGolia, who has served on our board since its inception and for the last three years as our Board Chair and has recently held positions also on Executive Committee. He's just been an outstanding leader for our agency and I'm glad that even though he's no longer our Chair, that he remains very active. I also want to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Holland, who serves us as Atherton's Board Alternate. So thank you for that. Shortly, I'm going to show a brief video and hopefully someone there at the city can help advance the slides here for me. But before we tee that up, I do want to say that I want to reiterate that for right now Peninsula Clean Energy is very focused on providing affordable rates as our number one priority in this incredibly high energy rate timeframe and high interest rate timeframe that we find ourselves in. We've been very responsive to public outcry regarding bills and as as Director DeGolia knows, our board recently held our 2023 rates so that we could keep our rates well below PG&E and affordable. The good news is that PG&E, sorry, Peninsula Clean Energy is able to do many things well at the same time. And so I'm glad to say that we're also delivering on the promise of cleaner energy. So with that, let's turn to the video and then I'll come back and wrap up with a few slides. Thank you.
Give us a moment, Sean, to set that up.
No worries. Should be embedded in the slide deck there.
Yes, I'm just gonna share.
There we go.
Audio is running from my computer.
If it doesn't work, that's okay. We can continue.
You'd like to continue. If you can continue, I'll put it up through our our presentation mode on the computer and then I'll run it just after you're done.
Okay, super. So if you would go back to the deck and advanced to the next slide, please. Here, are you able to get to the next? There we go. Okay, thank you so much. One more ahead, please. Okay, thank you all for your patience with this. So as a reminder, for those of you who may not be as familiar with PCE and the model under which it works, we are formed as a California Joint Powers Authority. PCE was formed back in 2016 and in so doing, we assumed responsibility for procurement and in some cases, the development of electricity source, resources on behalf of our customers in the County of San Mateo and more recently in the City of Los Manos. We partner with Pacific Gas and Electric, who continues to own and operate the distribution and transmission and generation. Just, sorry, the transmission and distribution lines over which the power enters your homes and businesses. PG&E also sends a consolidated bill on behalf of both of us. So that in the end, at the end of the day, the customer can benefit by saving money and also benefit from cleaner energy. Next slide, please. I mentioned at the top of the presentation that our key priority at this time is focused on affordable electric generation rates. I mentioned that the board earlier this year decided to hold our rates steady at 2023 rates, which means that right now our customers are receiving a 10% to 15% discount on PG&E's generation rates, which will hold through at least July. The board also recently amended our rate design approach so that ultimately we have a goal of providing deeper discounts than the standard or traditional 5% that we've been offering since the beginning. But the board has been very clear that 5% would hopefully be the minimum going forward. Next slide, please. We also offer a much cleaner energy product than PG&E. So the top line that you see there in black is, and these are, this is 2022 data. The 2023 data will be coming out shortly, although likely to look much the same from PCE's perspective. So the top line there in black is the overall state of California, the emissions factor there, which is, as you can see, just under 500 megawatt hours carbon emissions. And you've got PG&E there in the middle as the light gray line. And you have PCE's Eco Plus, that is our standard service offering, which since 2020 has been almost at zero. And the reason that it's not a flat line at zero is that we do have some geothermal in our power portfolio that brings it up just a few notches there. We are working to hopefully have geothermal recognized by the state as a renewable resource under the state RPS rules. But the bottom line is that for a very long time, our energy has been the cleanest and will remain so going forward. Next slide, please. We have a number of programs that also support our clean electricity and affordable rates. I'm just going to mention a few here tonight. The first is a number of things that we do in the home electrification space, one of which has been very, very popular, and that is our new 0% loan program where any customer, regardless of income level, is able to apply for a $10,000 loan to be used for swapping out gas appliances. So it can be energy efficiency or any kind of electrification for your home. It's a simple one-page application and then that is repaid over five years on the customer bills. And we're actually up to over 450 loans issued since the beginning of 2023 at this point. We also have a number of customer rebates. Upcoming is a one-stop shopping electrification concierge so that customers who are interested in electrifying their homes and figuring out how to stack all of the various rebates available will be able to come to PCE and we will help them through all the steps in that complicated process. Next slide, please. We also do a number of things related to supporting transition to electric transportation. So we have a number of EVs throughout our service territory, well over 1,000 now at this point, with about 3,500 more in the pipeline. We have used EV rebates for any income level. And we also have a number of e-bike rebates and all continue to be exceedingly popular with our customers. Next slide, please. We also partner very closely with our member agencies, including the town of Atherton. We support climate action plan funding and development. We have what we call a Gov EV program to support local transition to EV fleets and local EV charging infrastructure. We have a very active, what we call Gov PV, that is solar and in some cases solar plus storage on government buildings. In round one, we have 12 projects underway, including one there in the town of Atherton, a number of more underway through round two. And now a couple of new building programs for local governments, our Local Government Electrification Program, which is a combination loan and grant, and our new Member Agency Energy Grant Program. And I encourage you to take advantage of that. That's about $182,000 that has been allocated to the town of Atherton to use for any sustainability project or electrification project that you may have in your future. Next slide, please. All right, so a couple of Atherton highlights here. Just to let you know where we are. So the town currently has over 2,600 active accounts with a 98% participation rate. So I do want to thank all of you for being customers and for encouraging your neighbors to remain customers. Atherton customers have saved over $2.4 million so far in rate savings since our launch in 2016. There are 16 EV chargers in development around town. As mentioned, we do have a PV system that is underway at your town center. We have three youth climate ambassadors from Atherton who go to the local high schools. And if you want to learn more, we have new web pages dedicated to all of our local government partners. You just click and you can see what the latest stats are for your town. So with that, I'm about to wrap up and then if we can run the the video, we will, or otherwise I'll just take questions. One more slide, please. One more after that. So just a couple of new developments and just for your awareness, earlier this year, our board, at that time led by Councilmember DeGolia, released a community reinvestment package valued at about $68 million that included $300 rebates for our lowest income customers served by CARE and FARA programs. We also allocated money to additional battery storage for residential and government facilities, for school facilities. We have more money that was allocated to home electrification, et cetera, et cetera. So you can check out our website if you want more details about how that 68 million was distributed across our service territory. I also want to let you know that the board also recently amended our 100% renewable goal. Originally, we had targeted next year to meet that goal for our standard service, but electric, the cost of energy on wholesale market has, in many cases, tripled and gone up more than 300% and we just needed to make a balanced decision to push that goal out in order to keep customer rates low and be responsive to what we're hearing. Last thing I'll say is that Caltrain will be joining our service in the fall and hopefully a couple of other large public entity customers going forward. So we appreciate all of our customers and now you can go to the last slide from our team to yours. We look forward to continuing our good relationship with the town of Atherton. So happy to take questions and/or if the video is working, we can watch that too. Thank you.
I'm gonna try something here, so just bear with me for a moment.
Sure.
Peninsula Clean Energy was founded in 2016 with a clear goal to provide clean energy.
Peninsula Clean Energy was founded in 2016 with a clear goal to provide clean energy, lower rates, and to combat climate change.
As a nonprofit energy provider, I'm proud to say that we've managed to slash emissions by 94% while at the same time increasing renewables and maintaining electric generation rates at a minimum 5% below PG&E. That's over $100 million back to our customers and our communities since 2016.
In the past year, we have secured our largest win contract to date, adding over 200 megawatts of clean energy into our resource portfolio. In 2024, we expect to bring online five new projects, adding over 300 megawatts of new capacity on the grid. This will get us within striking distance of meeting our 100% renewable goal.
Peninsula Clean Energy is showing that we don't have to make a choice between affordable rates and cleaner energy.
We don't have to satisfy corporate shareholders. Our customers are our shareholders.
Peninsula Clean Energy was started to combat climate change, but now it's so much more. The true value of communal choice is that it's local. It means going to your street fair and seeing us at a booth and asking a question about your energy bill. It's also when you go to plug in your EV and seeing a charger provided by Peninsula Clean Energy. Peninsula Clean Energy serves all of our customers in our community with different language outreach and programs for all income levels.
A lot of the programs that come from Peninsula Clean Energy help our communities to take part because many times the communities that we serve are left out with the policies that comes down to address climate change and reduce gas emissions.
We're helping the community install thousands of chargers, including at hard-to-reach places like apartment buildings.
So with the Inflect Clean Energy's EV-ready program, this has been so affordable. We're at 29 outlets installed and the cost has been basically nothing. And for mom and pop house providers, it's really, really important to us because we don't have a lot of capital to spend.
The average charger in our program is being installed for about $4,000, much less than the average of $10,000 to $18,000 in other programs.
We are your local partner of building a sustainable community. Peninsula Clean Energy remains steadfast in our commitment to power our communities, combat climate change, and provide affordable clean energy to the customers we proudly serve. Peninsula Clean Energy was founded in 2016 with a clear goal to provide clean energy, lower rates.
Okay.
Combat climate change.
As a non-
There you go. So very sorry that we're a bit out of sequence here tonight and I I look forward to coming to see you in person in the future, but that concludes our presentation and I'm wondering if there are any questions. I'm happy to take them.
Do you have any questions on that?
I'm good. Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for what you guys do. Amazing.
We were very happy to have served you. Thank you so very much and have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
So we're going to move on to our next meeting, which is Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space.
Margaret. Here you are.
Margaret McNiven.
Yes. Can you hear me?
No.
No.
You gotta speak up. It's on, though. It's on.
I beg your pardon?
Hold on for a second. The microphone is on, but please.
Yeah, it's the worst.
Yes.
Is that better?
That's much better.
Good.
Thank you, Margaret.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, Council. My name is Margaret McNiven. And thank you so much for this opportunity to present the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District to you. I'm one of the seven members of the Board of Directors. Okay, slide, next slide when you get a chance. Okay, Mid Penn's mission is to acquire and preserve a regional green belt of open space land in perpetuity, protect and restore the natural environment, and provide opportunities for ecologically sensitive public enjoyment and education. On the coast, Mid Penn has an expanded mission to acquire and preserve agricultural land of regional significance, preserve rural character, and encourage viable agricultural use of the land. Next slide. Okay, this is a map of the peninsula, San Francisco Peninsula, showing the current Mid Penn Green Belt, some 72,000 acres in San Mateo and Santa Cruz, Santa Clara Counties, all the dark green ones. And as an aside, the lands shown in light green are also protected, county and state parks, Golden Gate National Recreation Area and nonprofit land trusts, including Post, Semper Virens, and Save the Redwoods. So we have pretty remarkable green belt for such a built-up area. Next slide. So in summary, Mid Penn is a special district funded primarily through property taxes. There are some 760 constituents in San Mateo, Santa Clara, and a tiny bit of Santa Cruz Counties. And with a seven-member elected Board of Directors, we have 27 open spaces with some 250 miles of trails. Oh, hiking is allowed on all trails and biking on 60% of the trails, horse riding on some of the trails in many of the preserves, and dogs on leash are allowed in very few preserves, but mostly Pulgas Ridge in San Carlos. So I just thought I'd run through some pretty pictures to whet your appetites to go visit these wonderful lands. Next. Ravenswood. Next, Pulgas Ridge with the dogs. Next, El Corte Madera with the redwoods up on Skyline. Next. La Honda Creek Open Space Preserve on 84, the iconic red barn that you see going to the coast. Next. Russian Ridge, where the beautiful wildflowers show up every spring. Next. Thornwood Open Space, a little preserve just near Woodside. Nice place to go and take a morning hike. Next. And Windy Hill, overlooking Portala Valley. Very beautiful. All right. So. Next slide. In 2014, voters showed their support for Mid Penn by approving a $300 million general obligation bond to support public open space priorities and further acquire and protect these public lands. Thank you for your trust in us. And here is a synopsis of some of the projects we've been working on, thanks in no small part to these extra funds. Next. Land acquisition. In 2023, we made our biggest acquisition to date when we purchased 5,100 acres of the 6,300-acre Cloverdale Ranch from Peninsula Open Space Trust. Post, that's Post. Post has been accumulating these lands since 1990 to eventually turn over to Mid Penn for stewardship and care in perpetuity. The property is located just south of Pescadero and we have an option to purchase that last the orange bit on the left up there. Cloverdale provides significant habitat to an array of plants and wildlife, including the federally listed endangered San Francisco goddess snake. Oh, actually, you can go back one. There you go. It includes regionally significant creeks which provide important andromous anadromous fish habitat, salmon that migrate upstream, anadromous. Currently, the preserve is not open to the public except for docent-led hikes, but there's one trail, Willbost Watch Trail off Highway 1 down by the lighthouse, which has magnificent views of the ocean when there's no fog. Next slide. Wildfire, Wildland Fire Resiliency Program. While none of Mid Penn's lands burned during the 2020 CZU fire, Mid Penn actively assisted CAL FIRE with their response. And this is a picture of one of our rangers helping hold the line at Old Hall Road. Next slide. Wildfire's a pretty important topic of conversation and here is the latest fire hazard severity map for San Mateo County. As you can see, all the pink and orange land there is just a very high fire-prone area. And the CZU wildfire underscored the need for Mid Penn to enhance its fuel reduction efforts while at the same time protecting the biodiversity of the land. So we've taken a four-pronged approach. We we have a vegetative management plan which addresses the creation and maintenance of fuel breaks and defensible space zones in a manner that is sensitive to the native ecology and biodiversity of the species. We also have a prescribed fire plan which addresses prescribed fire to manage fuel breaks and a wildland fire pre-plan with information on existing conditions, infrastructure, and a monitoring plan which will provide a framework to inform future management techniques. Next slide. This is a map. Those yellow stars are where we've actually worked on fuel management. So you can see we're really covering a lot of our lands in trying to help reduce the fire severity. We've been able to obtain some $7.5 million in grant funding for this work as well as leveraged another $9 million for our regional partners who now include fire-safe councils and fire districts. So we do take our fire responsibility very seriously. Next. Youth outreach. We're pretty proud of our youth outreach program, which the board approved in 2020. And here you just see some of the kids enjoying themselves out in the country having a good old time. That's Daniel's Nature Center on the bottom left by Alpine Pond. Next. And we partner with Latino Outdoors, Siena Youth Center, Grassroots Ecology, the San Jose Conservation Corps, Environmental Volunteers, the Santa Clara Library District, and Save the Redwood League's High School Program. So we do really try to bring the youth out. Okay. Next. Highway 17 crossings. I'm sure you're aware that many people bang into animals on Highway 17. Not a good thing. So we are working on providing safe passage across, well, actually, under the highway for wildlife. And right there near Lexington Reservoir. That's where the most incidents occur of what, because the the wildlife really tries to cross Highway 1, Highway 17 at that area. So while we're doing an undercrossing for the animals, we also decided to look into a overcrossing for hikers and bikers so that we can complete so that we can complete all the Bay Ridge Trail crossings. So this is, we're looking at a two thousand and twenty-six start for that project. Next. We also are working on a skyline or the Bay Area to the sea, you know, connected trail up there by Parisima Creek Redwoods, and it will connect the Bay Area with Highway One, which the California Coastal Trail runs down. So that would be a pretty fun hike. Next. Rodenticide outreach. This is a pretty big one, because visitors to our preserves started to, especially Rancho San Antonio, started to notice sickly animals, namely bobcats, coyotes, and raptors that prey on rodents. And they exhibit signs of rat poisoning, mangy coats, and loss of weight. So in an attempt to reduce the risk of poison exposure for wildlife, we are reaching out to the surrounding communities to encourage the use of non-rodenticide-based methods to control rodents, such as rat traps and zappers. Next. That's it? Any questions?
I have a question. You guys offer curated hikes. How do people find out about those?
Docent hikes?
Yes.
Yes. That is, if you go back to that last slide, that is our website. And it's pretty easy to navigate. I can't do it in my head without having it in front of me. But the hikes are all listed on the website.
And they're open to the public?
Open to the public.
Fantastic.
Yeah. All sorts of interesting wildflower hikes, earthquake hikes, redwood hikes. Yeah.
Nice. Thank you.
Exhausting hikes.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, the website is a really good source of information. Openspace.org.
There you go. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time.
Love your work.
So the next item we have is recognition of May two thousand and twenty-four as Mental Health Month. Is there anybody here to? Do you want to talk first, or do you want me to read the? Okay. I get to read out loud. Thank you, George, for making it giant for me. So, so this is a proclamation from the town of Atherton. In recognition of May two thousand and twenty-four as Mental Health Month, whereas in two thousand and twenty-one, one out of every eight San Mateo County adults likely had serious psychological distress in the past year. From two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one, San Mateo County youth in grades seven and eleven reported chronic sadness and hopelessness, twenty-nine and forty-three percent respectively, in the last twelve months. And whereas every day millions of people face stigma related to mental health and substance abuse conditions and may feel isolated and alone, going years before receiving any help if left untreated have life expectancies twenty-five years shorter than the general population. And whereas, while mental health conditions are common across all types of demographics, certain communities face inequitable access to services, including people of color, LGBTQ, plus community, youth, and older adults. And whereas, mental health and substance use conditions are treatable health conditions, and people who have mental health and substance use conditions can recover and lead full and meaningful lives. And whereas, San Mateo County's Board of Supervisors is the first in the country to pass a resolution in January two thousand and twenty-four declaring loneliness a public health crisis and pledging to promote social connection in our communities. Given this public health priority, the theme for two thousand and twenty-four May Mental Health Month is Heal Through Connection. Ongoing dates are posted at www.smchealth.org, MHM. And whereas, San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Office of Diversity and Equity, Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, and partners are collectively organizing activities that our community can participate in through the month, including free in-person and virtual events, advocacy days, and social media campaigns. Whereas the town of Atherton wishes to increase the public knowledge of signs and symptoms of mental health and substance use conditions, professional and self-help resources, and self-care practice, now and therefore be it, that now therefore, as mayor of the town of Atherton on behalf of the Atherton City Council, do hereby recognize May two thousand and twenty-four as Mental Health Month to enhance public awareness of mental health to help end the stigma and direct members of the community to resources and support for mental health and substance use conditions. Thank you. Want to go to the mic?
Thanks.
We needed it raised for her, and we needed it lowered for me. Thank you so much, Mayor Hawkins, and members of the Atherton City Council, city staff, town staff, as well as members of the public. My name is Frida Echet, and I am on the San Mateo County Behavioral Health Commission and have the honor also of leading and chairing our Youth and Family Services Committee. So it's especially meaningful to me that there's mention of our young people explicitly in the proclamation, just because as a parent, as somebody who struggles with an eating disorder and other mental health and behavioral health challenges really started in my formative teenage years. It's especially noteworthy and important. I'm honored to be here to accept the resolution. Our commission is really devoted to building awareness around mental health and substance use challenges, reducing stigma, providing oversight, and partnering with the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services on a number of factors, which have very much become, evolved into some big systems changes, really trying to demystify the process of accessing services irrespective of point of entry in an empathy-based, culturally competent way. I just alluded to why I personally am very moved and think that this is an important month, an important factor to, to address. My eating disorder started when I was fourteen, and it ruled and controlled me for almost two decades despite efforts to manage it on my own. And truly, what was the anecdote was healing through connection. I can attribute my recovery, which is now about twelve years now, freedom from the behaviors, which was everything restriction, bulimia, compulsive reading, you name it, I've done it, was really through peer support, sharing, and empathy, as well as service. And so, thank you all. I want to just encourage others that are listening, that may be listening and referring back. You can track and follow. We're just, it's May fifteenth, so there's still a half of a month of activities that are taking place. You can visit the aforementioned website. You can follow hashtag SMC Against Loneliness on social media channels to access different anecdotes, events, sources of inspiration, as well as share your own experiences. And then also, you'll notice I'm wearing a little lime green ribbon. Lime green is the color of Mental Health Month. It really illuminates joy, lightness, and sheds around possibility and sparks conversation. So I also have, I'm very on-brand. I have my nails as well. So definitely join an event. One that I'm especially proud of is our young people, our Youth Action Board. Seven phenomenal young individuals ranging from fourteen to twenty-four transitional age youth have, have really launched and started conversations, sharing their own experiences with high school students across the county, as well as we had our first discussion with middle schoolers, about sixty middle schoolers. And one of the big takeaways, it just made me weepy, was them sharing openly in an auditorium with fifty-nine of their teenage middle school colleagues that it's okay to talk about their mental health, and they don't need to have struggles alone. So that in and of itself is a success. So thank you so much for the time and the acknowledgement, and I hope everyone has a wonderful rest of your day and meeting. So thank you.
So just to follow up on that, the events that are coming up in this month, they can find at the smchealth.org website? And there's, what kinds of events? Can you give us like a sentence or two?
Oh, my goodness. There are virtual events, in-person events that range from spoken word and open mic to peer learning, sharing arts through art therapy, and a series of other things. So you will definitely go there, and there'll be an organization, a group, or an activity that hopefully resonates with you, and I would follow, follow your interest and your need.
Thank you. Thank you for the work you do. Awesome.
Conversation. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, I'd like it up, open it for any public comments. So this is a portion for anyone who wishes to make a public comment. That's not on the agenda. Comments on the consent agenda. Seeing none?
None online.
Are there none?
The consent agenda.
Consent agenda. So it's item one to five on the agenda. All right, so we're going to open the public hearing. Oh, there isn't any. Sorry about that. Regular agenda, item number six. Consider appeal of the cost for a dead and dangerous tree removal at one seventy-five Ravenswood Ave. Have a report. Is Mona giving there? Actually, Mona, did you want to read, explain to everyone the procedure we're going to use for this?
Yes, Mayor Hawkins, Manuelian. I will open that. Would you like to open the public hearing first?
Hold on for one second. You're not very loud. Is there a way to turn her up a little bit?
Anthony, can you turn me up a little bit?
Yeah, working on that. Go ahead, Mona.
Thank you, Mayor Hawkins, Manuelian, and members of the council. Mayor, I would invite you to open the public hearing, and then I can take over.
Oh, this, I did do that. Sorry. I thought it was wrong. Okay. So I'll open the public hearings, and Mona, can you please explain the procedure?
Thank you. So the public hearing regarding Mr. Foster's appeal of a payment of six thousand nine hundred dollars for the cost of the town to remove a dead and dangerous tree from the right-of-way immediately adjacent to his property located at one hundred and seventy-five Ravenswood Avenue has now been opened. Before we get into the actual substance of that appeal, I would like to describe a summary of the procedures, both for Mr. Foster as the appellant, as well as the public. First, the council will be asked to publicly announce any testimony or evidence that they have received outside of this hearing process. That will be called ex parte communications. Next, council members will be asked to announce any conflicts of interest they may have concerning this matter. If they do have any conflicts of interest that disqualify themselves, they will need to recuse themselves from further discussing this and be asked to leave the room. Next, staff will be asked to provide the background of this. I will be providing the staff report, assisted by Sally Bent and Robert Ovadia. After staff provides the presentation, and the council has an opportunity to ask the questions of staff, then the public comment period will be opened by the mayor. Mr. Foster, as the appellant, will be provided ten minutes to make his presentation. That time may be divided between him and any other parties that he may have brought with him. He may provide his or her testimony and any relevant evidence. Following that presentation, the members of the public will be given an opportunity to make comments relevant to this agenda item. Mr. Foster will then have an opportunity to respond to public comment, but should not introduce new evidence or testimony or restate previous comments. Then Mr. Foster will have five minutes to provide a rebuttal. We will then close the public hearing, and then staff will have an opportunity to address any questions or issues that may have been addressed by Mr. Foster or from the public. Finally, the council will take an opportunity to deliberate, if appropriate, make findings, and then make decision. So now that the procedures have been described, we will go ahead and proceed and ask if there have been any ex parte communications by any of the council members and anyone outside of these proceedings.
I, I did. Mr. Foster came to my office hours and talked to us about this issue briefly in my office hours. Is anyone else?
No, I've had no ex parte communications.
Okay. And what was the second question? If you have any financial material interests? I have none. Anyone else?
No.
So it looks like no one here will be dismissed. So.
With that, I will present the staff report on this item. The staff report on this item is presented to you tonight concerns a dead or dying tree that was removed by town staff adjacent to one seventy-five Ravenswood Avenue, which is property that is owned by Mr. Foster. This actually dates back several years, when Mr. Foster first contacted staff and alerted them that the subject tree had issues wrought and was concerned that the tree should be removed because it was not being properly maintained. Staff responded to Mr. Foster and explained to him that any trees that are located within the right-of-way adjacent to private property are actually required to be maintained, first of all, by the private property owner, and if they need to be removed, are required to be applied for by a tree permit removal and removed at the authorization of town staff pursuant to tree permit by that private property owner. Unfortunately, Mr. Foster did not remove the tree several years ago, even though staff periodically checked to see if the tree had improved with ongoing maintenance, and it had not. Last year, Mr. Foster again alerted staff that the tree was in declining health. Staff did a site inspection and noted that the tree had become in further declining health. Code enforcement provided a notice to abate to Mr. Foster and explained that he had thirty days to abate the condition of the tree by removing it, and if he did not, that the tree would be removed by staff. Mr. Foster responded that he would like to appeal that decision. The Heritage Tree Ordinance does not actually provide for a linear appeal process, but in the interest of due process, staff allowed an opportunity for Mr. Foster to appeal that determination. Unfortunately, between November, when this had occurred, and December, there was a change in facts. There was a severe weather storm that was coming. So what had changed from a dead and dying tree in November changed to an imminent situation in December because the nature of the tree, coupled with the severe weather circumstances, resulted in town staff needing to immediately remove the tree to protect life and health, life and safety. The question before you is twofold today. Number one, do private property owners have an obligation to maintain and remove trees that are within the right-of-way adjacent to their private properties? If the answer to that is yes, then does the appellant have a duty to pay the six thousand and nine hundred dollars and the costs that are associated with the town's removal of that tree? Staff's position is that the answer to both of those are yes. The Atherton Municipal Code, specifically in sections eight point zero eight point zero one zero and section twelve point one zero point zero two zero states that private property owners are responsible. states that private property owners are responsible for trees that are adjacent to their properties. So the clear answer to the first question is yes, private property owners are in fact responsible for trees that are within the right of way adjacent to their property. As such, because Mr. Foster failed to remove the tree, then he should then be responsible for the town's removal of the tree because he failed to do that. With that, I am happy to answer any further questions, but like I said, we have Sally and Robert Ovadia available to answer any technical questions about the tree or communications that may have occurred.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I understand your explanation and assuming that the council makes the positive findings about responsibility that you suggest, you say, or the staff report says then the appellant would be responsible for the 9,000, $6,900 in costs. And my question is, could the council choose to reduce the amount of the fee?
Yes, the count, so the cost, the direct cost of the removal was $5,750. And the basis of that was hiring an outside contractor, WCA, for the actual removal. The additional cost was $1,150, which was the administrative cost associated with the subject tree. So the council could decide to only levy the $5,750 for the hard costs and not assess the administrative cost associated with this. I will however, say that there were potential fines and penalties associated with the code enforcement action. Those were not levied.
I have a question. From November 22nd, he, he received a letter saying that the whole thing was going to be on hold. And then in December, the tree was taken down. After that December, after that November 22nd, what other communication was there with this guy about the tree? Cause I didn't see any in the chain of communications. So his last communications in there says that the thing is on hold. And which I, as a layperson, I would assume the whole thing's on hold. I think it was just part of it that was. And it also timestamped it saying he had applied, it said that that letter was serving as a timestamp that he had appealed. So as far as we're concerned, he had appealed and it was time stamped. Did he not get any other communication before the tree went down?
And this is Sally Bentz at Town Arborist. And so there was no written communication between Mr. Foster and myself after that. However, I did have phone calls with him about his concerns with the tree's health. He seemed very concerned about the tree falling. But then once the emails went through that he was appealing, then it would be code enforcement or admin responsibly to discuss that with him. So I'm not sure what kind of communications they had with it.
I have a, I have a comment.
You'll get, you'll be up in a minute. Sorry.
I just want to talk about the documents in the packet that show emails and communications with the homeowner going back to 2017 about a dying oak tree overhanging the road and bike lane that everybody seems to feel that there's something wrong with it. And the homeowner is saying he wants the town to do something about it. So from 2017, everyone had been alerted to the fact that this tree was a potential danger, correct?
So in 2017, I got an email from the past assistant city attorney stating that she had received an email from him that he had concerns about this oak tree. And this was the first time I was notified of this. I looked at the tree and I let him know the process for tree removals and that it's his responsibility. When I reviewed the tree again in 2023, when he contacted me in November about two other trees on his property, plus this tree again, that's when I noticed that the tree had, in the seven years, had further declined and it became more of a hazard than it was seven years ago in 2017.
And so that's when you notified him that it was a hazard. You, you had communications with him that it was his responsibility, even where dead and dangerous tree requires removal, property owners are still responsible for the tree removal permit?
Yes. Myself, Robert Ovadia, Steve Tyler, and other staff members have alerted Mr. Foster that it's his responsibility to maintain it and, and remove with a permit trees in the right of way.
And I can invite you to look at attachment number seven, Councilmember Lewis. There is correspondence between Ms. Bentz and the property owner in which property owner is again inquiring about how do I remove this large oak tree that it's in the right of way? And she then respond, and she then responds and says that you have to apply for a tree removal. And then I can remove that. And he does actually say that he has an arborist in mind to remove the tree, but never actually goes through with it. And that's in 2021.
Okay. What is our actual procedure for when someone files an appeal? I mean, what is our procedure? So he thought that he, he applied. He's got a timestamp letter. What's the normal steps? I understand a storm took place and it became even more dangerous. So I understand why the tree was down. I just understand the process of how we communicate people and what they're supposed to do.
So this is something that we will want to clean up going forward because our Heritage Tree Ordinance does not clearly articulate a process. However, we did believe that in the interest of justice, so to speak, that there should be an appeal process. And so we went forward with the appeal process that was set forth in the Appeal Code in the municipal, in the municipal code. And we brought this before the council for its consideration.
So you think that something like saying who they apply to and how is something we could add, for example?
That's what we, that's what we would like to do. We would like to make it much more clear in the future.
And is it true that if it's a dangerous tree, it's treated slightly differently than when it's just a regular problem tree?
So typically, if somebody applies for a tree removal in the right of way or on the private property, I would review the tree at the site and then determine if the tree is dead or dangerous. If the tree is dead or dangerous, I can issue them the permit and they can remove the tree. However, in this case, he didn't apply for the tree removal. And because of his concerns, he had a lot of concerns. He said he couldn't sleep at night. There were a lot of concerns about this tree. And after reviewing that, it was, it was failing even more. And because the tree is located over the right of way, over the bike lane of the Menlo-Atherton High School, and a lot of kids walk there and a lot of bikers walk there, which Mr. Foster pointed out to me, that this tree was a higher risk. When I did the assessment, I rated it as a moderate risk. However, with the storms that we were having, with the wind and the rain and the way the tree was and his concerns, we abated this. This is the first time in my 10 years we have abated something like this because it was a serious matter. We don't typically abate this. So it was, it, it, it had to be very serious for us to abate this because that, that's not something we want to do. And in my 10 years, residents have just removed the tree after they get notified in our code that it's their responsibility.
Yeah, go ahead, Brick.
I have a question. Sally, it looks like the invoice from West Coast Arborist was for $8,310. And I, I recognize that that includes an emergency response fee. Did they discount that ultimately? And so that their actual bill was $5,750?
I think the overall bill included two trees.
Say it again?
The overall bill included work on two different trees. And so the fifth, the $5,000 and change is the tree specifically at 175 Ravenswood.
I see. I see. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So he basically just woke up one morning and his tree was gone? Is that? How I would, okay.
Do we, what are, public comment on? Is there any?
If we don't have any more comments.
If we, does anyone have any more?
No.
No. Okay. Is there any public comments on this?
Somebody who's opposed to genocide has a comment.
So we would now allow Mr. Foster, if he would like to give his presentation?
Yes. Would you like to come up and give your?
And he would have?
Please, you have to go to the mic so we can hear you. And you have 10 minutes. You have 10 minutes.
Yeah, I don't need it, but I'll be brief and thank you for taking the time. First, I wanted to say that I lived here 20 years and it's been great. Officer retrieved my package yesterday from a guy on a stolen bike. So thank you. I think you might've heard that. I don't know. But I've never had that before. I don't know how they found a guy on a stolen bike, but they did and it's got my package back. Secondly, 20 years ago, when I bought the house, coincidentally, all the proceeds went to Peninsula Open Space Preserve. But maybe left, others would say thank you. So yeah, so the long and the short of it, real quick, because I happen to have the timeline and we both, none of us want to be here talking about a tree since, I've been talking about it since November of last year. And I know Ms. Mayor, I know you have all these documents, so I don't need to go over them, but real quick, the, let's see here. The first thing that happened is that I reported a tree because kid, there's like a hundred kids a day every hour going by that bike lane. In the past, I've had a tree removed at my expense in that planning strip because, you know, I'm not here to argue that y'all should be taking care of that strip, even though I think it should be. That's not why I'm here to argue that. Everything that y'all said was correct, Mona, that it's the property, it's California law, I guess, that, you know, I'm responsible for that strip. Even though Atherton has agreed to do, to take care of that strip on Middlefield and other streets. And I would argue that Ravenswood, there's only three houses on Ravenswood that belong to Atherton. I'm up at five in the, in morning and up and go to bed at midnight and there's still traffic. I don't see how that's not as busy and as big a thoroughfare as Middlefield is. We carry 150 foot telephone poles there for power for all, like all of Atherton and Menlo Park. And for some reason, I've spent thousands of dollars maintaining that strip. And before I paid again, I wanted to at least put it in appeal and say, okay, maybe just take a look at it and see, you know, hey, I view this as the same as Middlefield. Can you take care of it? Or my bank goes even lower. So I put it in appeal and long story short, you know, this, this isn't really just about the tree itself. It's like, I think like you all kind of admitted a minute ago. There's a fault in the appeal process because I, let me just give you the timeline again. I reported the tree out of goodwill that it needs to be taken out. I was then immediately given by Lisa Marie Daly, 15 days, not 30, as Mona mentioned earlier, to get rid of the tree, which is like virtually impossible. You can't paint, get someone to paint your door in 15 days. Nevertheless, and that was on, on November 22nd. Nevertheless, just in case my appeal failed, on November 29th, and Mayor, you have this bid I gave to you when we met, I got a bid for $3,400 to remove the tree. And coincidentally, the guy said he'd do it right away because he knows I've got tons of business to give him because I have an acre full of trees. I told him to pause because I was waiting to hear from the appeal. As we discussed earlier, I never heard about the appeal. Next thing you know, I wake up on December 26th, the day after Christmas, and the tree's gone. I write Sally, who's helped me on many trees before, I wrote her a thank you note. I said, I guess Atherton came to the sense that it makes sense to include these three houses kind of in the Middlefield zone. I mean, I'm right at the corner of Middlefield and Ravenswood. I wrote a thank you note, never thought anything of it again. That's totally wrong. Three months later. I don't know, coincidentally, three months later, because on March 12th, I emailed Lisa Marie Daly because she's the one that initiated the code violation. And I said, is everything okay? And a day later, I get in the mail the $7,000 bill. I was fully willing to pay the $3,400 that I got three bids on to do the job at a fraction of the price that you all did, but never got the opportunity. Never heard back on the appeal. So for the, just so other people don't have to go through six months of working on one tree, it would just be my humble suggestion that we figure out this appeal process because it didn't work for me. And now I'm being asked plus penalty to pay something I had no opportunity to even discuss. I wasn't trying to skirt the process. I've removed trees as there before, like I said, at my expense. And that's really, it's really it. It's just a, it's just a flaw in the appeal process. And I mistakenly thought it was all taken care of until I get the bill. So that's really all I have to say. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thinking about it.
Thank you.
So I guess I would ask two, I would just ask two questions. Can we include those three houses to be taken care of as it is for the fortunate people to happen to live on Middlefield versus being the three unfortunate houses on Ravenswood, which is equally as busy? Number one, if you can't do that, can we at least, you know, figure out a way for me not to pay the double the fee price to remove the tree than I had to put it out? Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Done public comment?
No, no.
Public comment on what he said, I guess. Are there any questions or public comment on?
This agenda item?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to bring it back to council.
All right. So I guess I'll bring it back to council for any questions or comments.
I have a comment. I understand how you feel. I really do. It's got to be shocking. I think at the least Atherton, even though in a very tumultuous time of weather and, you know, real concern about the safety of our, you know, the public, that that tree was going to come down in a big gust of wind. As we had been seeing trees falling all through that storm, we should have picked up the phone and called them and said, you know, we, we got to get this tree down, you know, you've got 10 minutes to do it. I own a property in Menlo Park and it's, it's a, it's a rental. And I went by one time, there was this big black acacia that had split and it was going like this. And I called my arborist, the McClanahan guy, and he got over there right there that day. So in imminent danger, when you know a tree is in a failing dangerous condition, it's your responsibility to take it down. I find it really hard to re, to understand why since 2017, you knew that tree was in danger and you didn't take action on it. But I will fault town for letting you believe you're going through an appeal and then without even calling you and saying, look, we're coming out and taking this down because it's an imminent danger. It's an imminent danger. And I think you got off really lucky that they took it down before it went down on top of, you know, a car on that intersection. I know that very, very, very well. So it's, it's a little personal to me because I, and it, I mean, so City of Menlo Park waived the permit fee for an immediate dangerous tree being taken down. And I know that Atherton waives the permit to take a tree down if it's immediate dangerous situation. But it's homeowner's responsibility, property owner's responsibility to really try their best to protect the health and safety of the people in their environments when the, the trees are in dangerous condition. Councilmember DeGoya had asked the question at the very beginning if we could maybe soften the, the cost. So I'm open to discussion with my fellow council members of doing that. But I ultimately, it was your responsibility to have taken the tree down way before it got to be into a dire. It was your responsibility to have taken the tree down way before it got to be into a dire, you know, storm. Situation where it was going to fail anyway. Sure, yes, I mean.
Get to come to the mic.
For years, the tree had black oak disease, which is when I brought it up, a long time ago.
Yeah.
But trees can have black oak disease. You can ask Sally and stay for twenty years. Only like two weeks before I brought it up the last time, did I realize that it was hollow. And that's only then that it become super dangerous.
Yeah.
And as I showed, I got a bid immediately.
Yeah, yeah.
And did ha- and did take responsibility to do it.
You should have had it done.
City, what the city put it in appeal, which I assumed they were taking responsibility for it. It's the cities. I'm not trying to blame anyone, but I never got a reply from the city.
I understand. I kind of think that the city was bending over backwards because we've never given. Uh, residents an appeal in this kind of a situation before. In our heritage, uh, tree ordinance, it, there's no room for an appeal. And so you had been saying, no, I want you to do it. I want you to do it. You should be responsible for it. Uh, I'm gonna appeal, you know, I want an appeal. And so I think, you know, you gotta say that in that situation, the town really kind of bent over backwards. And it bit them in the back. So, um, you know, it, when you noticed it at that point. It was your responsibility, I truly believe, your responsibility to call the arborist and say, get out, and not just, not just Sally. Because you don't want the town to do it, because the town's gonna cost more. Call your arborist and say, get out here and take this tree down right away. That's my personal feeling. That's my personal experience. And I understand you got caught in a, a bind because you felt a little bit of safety net because of the appeal process. But, you know, and I think that a phone call from the town would have been nice to say, hey, look. We're taking the tree down because it's eminently dangerous to our public.
Yeah, I agree. If they would have called me, I would have called my guy the same day.
Well, you should have called your guy anyway. Okay.
Anybody else have any comments or questions or comments?
I, sure, I can go. I think that the town, I'm very grateful that the town acted swiftly in getting that tree down in advance of the storms. I think that was a great move by the town. It protected potentially a lot of people. And I'm sure the resident agreed that it was good to get it down before the storms. I also think that in moving swiftly during the holidays, we missed a critical step. Of notifying the resident to give them a chance to potentially do it quickly. I think having it be in limbo for the appeal time, I understand why you were waiting. I understand why there was a delay in the immediate. I also note, that was the day before Thanksgiving, November twenty second, so it's a rough time, um, for swift action. I'm glad the tree is down. I'm glad the tree is down before the storms. I think we missed a step in calling the resident because he could have saved a lot of money there and so I think. Um, we should have a process for appeals and I think we should be talking about some fee reductions here, because I think. We didn't do our best work. We did great work. We skipped a step.
Rick?
Uh, I have a question. So I, I've looked through the file and what I see is. And, uh, the, the last email from the town that I see is a November twenty second email from Lisa Marie. Informing Mr. Foster that, um, uh. Once a notice and order to abate is received, that there is a section that enables a repeal, an appeal. If notified within ten days of the notice and order. I mean, that's what I'm reading in the email. Um, and that that was sent on November twenty second. Uh, I, I don't see any further communication since that November twenty second.
So did he respond? Within that ten days?
There's an email where she says it's a timestamp to accept his appeal.
I don't see. I don't see a response between November twenties, I don't see any written communication in here between November twenty second and December twenty sixth.
That's correct.
The last email I see.
That's correct.
Is Lisa Marie's email that dated November twenty second. Saying there's this appeal process and you have ten days and will, we hereby deem you to have appeal essentially.
Yep.
Is that accurate?
That's an accurate assessment of that email, correct.
But is that an accurate assessment of the situation? There wasn't further communication.
That's correct.
Between November twenty second.
I asked that question and Sally said she called, right Sally?
Called him.
Called him. I mean.
Missed that.
Communications, but you called him. Is that what you said?
And, I mean, Mr. Foster had a few, me and Mr. Foster had a few phone calls.
Between November twenty second and December twenty sixth?
I thought we did because he had concerns of the tree. However, once, so how it works with code enforcement and myself is that once. I, once I'm notified and I send out the information. Um, and then they receive the notice and order to, to, to do the work. Typically, I'm not as involved after that because he got mailed the notice and order. That the tree is dangerous, it needs to be removed and he has so many days to remove it. So typically, I don't have communication with the person after that because I've already communicated with them, um, before that to get to that point. And then it, the thing hasn't been done, so then it moves over to Lisa and she sends the notice and order. So typically, I don't do communication.
So.
I'm pretty sure we at least had one conversation about the health of the tree, but not about anything else.
So I get it that it's not on your plate. It's now in code enforcement and Lisa Marie is pretty much managing it. Um, and it sounds like there's kind of a problem in that. While Lisa Marie acknowledged an appeal, there wasn't really a process to affect that appeal. So I guess, one second, so the key issue for me is. Were you as code enforcement informed that Mr. Foster had a contract to take the tree down? Did, did we ever have any knowledge of that?
Come to the, uh, mic.
Yeah, please.
Lisa Marie Daly, certified code enforcement officer for the town of Atherton. The notice and order was sent via email as a courtesy, which is the reason that Mr. Foster was notified of everything going on prior to Thanksgiving. Uh, to give him the heads up because of the situation that we were undergoing. Um, in the notice and order, it gave the timeframe, which doesn't say business days or calendar days of the ten days for the appeal. Mr. Widmer, I believe, responded back because Mr. Foster reached out to him, which is how Sally and I became involved in this, um, email thread. That should, I believe, be also included in the packet. Within that thread, he asked about having an appeal. The appeal process is to appeal through the city council. The appeal does not go through code enforcement. Once somebody says appeal, it's kind of like saying parlay to a pirate. Um, everything stops for me. The whole process stops and I refer everything to city council or to. The city clerk and say, okay, they've asked for an appeal. I stop until I'm instructed otherwise. Which is why I didn't proceed with anything beyond that, because I'm not involved in the appeal process. From that point, I heard nothing.
But did you refer it to the city council? It would have been at the December city council meeting.
It was referred to, it was sent over and Mr. Foster was notified that it would go to the city council. Mr. Widmer was part of those emails and it was sent to the city clerk. Where it went from there, I was not privy to any of that information. I don't know. I was out of the correspondence from that point. Um, I'm not sure what happened after that point, to be quite honest with you, as to whether or not, where it went or anything on that. Like I said. Code enforcement does not have a, a step in that until it comes to this point.
It's out of your hands.
Uh, it's out of my hands, uh, which is why, and as I apologize to Mr. Foster for not responding back to him, because once the tree is abated, my case is closed. You know, once the tree's gone, I don't have any more part of it because there's nothing else to abate. Um, and I should have responded back when that happened in December, but as far as communications between the town for it being abated. That's still, as I said, that's above my position in the town. I never was told by anybody that, uh, or by Mr. Foster or anyone in town that he had hired or even thought about hiring. A company for tree abatement. That was never any notification. The only emails that I had any correspondence with. Uh, Mr. Foster were when I notified him and CC'd Mr. Widmer and so on and so forth. Of the notice and order, as I said, as a courtesy to give him a jump on it. And I believe a comment was made about fifteen days. It was actually eighteen or twenty-three, depending on if you use calendar or, um, you know, actual days. But as I said, that's a mute point because the same day that that email was sent, he asked for an appeal. Uh, he is correct, we don't have a formal appeal process for that, for the heritage tree. Um, ordinance because of the situation and it not being something we're familiar with and it being, you know, a very. Grave situation or could be a grave situation, very dangerous tree. Um, but at that point, once the appeal word had been put in an email, I notified him of what the next steps were, that I would notify the city clerk. And that's exactly what I did through the email, pushed the, uh, case through, sent the information and said, this is out of my hands at this point. Whatever you guys need to do, let me know and I'll be here to support you. And that's where I stood on that case at that point. And then I stepped back until I was notified that we were going to have the appeal. And then Mr. Foster had written me the email to ask me if the case was closed, at which point I did tell him, yes, you know, apologies for not writing you sooner, but yes, the case is closed. The tree has been abated. Code enforcement does not have anything on that. You need to contact the city's, uh, city clerk's office to ask about the appeal process. Because I am not involved in that process.
And at that point, that's when it transitioned over to Anthony, myself and the city attorney's office where we were having discussions about. The pending storm, the, the fact that it's a dangerous tree and does the town need to go out and abate the tree? But at no point, as has been noted here this evening, once we decided to abate the tree, did we contact the property owner.
I understand, but you had had that discussion before our council meeting in December.
Uh, no, it was, it was prior to that, that we had.
Prior to that, yeah, that's what, that's what I just said.
Didn't make your December agenda before we made the decision to abate. The appeal didn't set up on the agenda and then the, why did they, we wait so long on the appeal process, Mona? Do you remember?
No.
So it was, the, the delay at that point was money related, not tree removal related. Because the tree had already been removed, town had incurred the cost and the appeal for Mr. Forester was based on the, the dollars that were associated with.
But there was an appeal as of November twenty second. That was acknowledged.
Yes.
And, and therefore re- re- referred to the city clerk's office or your office. Sometime at or after, right after Thanksgiving, which is well before our December meeting.
Yeah, it, it, yes, there's an email exchange to that effect, but it's like. Councilmember Holland mentioned, it is the holidays. It didn't quite hit that timeline, so it did not make your December agenda.
Obviously.
Yeah.
I, I have a comment. It seems to me that nobody's questioning whose responsibility it was to take the tree down. But it's also really clear to me that we don't have our language down in how this happens. So you, to start with, it says you can apply, apply for an appeal and it says a date. As you pointed out, it doesn't say is it business day, non-business day. It doesn't say who to even apply to. So as a resident, he just responded back to you because you were the person who had sent him the thing. So ends up you weren't the person to get that, so we need to change what we say to residents of what the procedure is. It should be really clear, like if you're appealing a traffic violation, where you're supposed to send your appeal to, by what date and to whom. So we need to tighten that up, because in this case, I think that was not clear what they're supposed to do. So maybe we need to look at that. And I also believe there's a slight difference when something becomes an eminently dangerous tree. So perhaps we need to have specific stock wording, we say, when it's an eminently dangerous tree. And the procedures for that, because that's not appealable, is that correct, Mona? If it's an eminently dangerous, you can't appeal it, but you can if it's just a regular tree.
For summary abatement, we're allowed to move immediately because there are life and safety issues. So the issue of noticing, um, is not required. Um, you can appeal it after the fact, which is what's happening, but the issue of private, providing notice in advance is. Um, done away with again because you're trying to preserve life and safety.
Is urgent, okay.
Sorry, there were also some other communications referenced and this goes to the, the timeline issue. Uh, there was a communication from a council member that stated, uh, Dean has discussed the tree removal with several people. And they said it will take at least a month or so. This was November twenty second. Uh, please relax the ten day notice of completion or the fine clause in your letter. And there was follow-up communication from staff back and forth. And then, um.
Excuse me, I don't understand what, what you're saying.
Uh, Lisa Marie mentioned that there was communication engagement with the member of the council.
Her, so you're reading her?
No, I'm reading the council member's email, because the council member was in contact with Mr. Forster, Foster.
So, he's, that seems odd.
And then the follow-up one to that, so this is the information that staff is receiving from Mr. Foster through a council member. And then further on November twenty second, he called me and said he cannot afford it now. And believes the town should cover it or share in the cost and objected to the ten day directive or fine.
That's dated when?
November twenty second.
That's, that's an email. Referring to a conversation he had had with Mr. Foster.
So, I'll go out on a limb and say, we should define our procedure, which includes. Direct city council members shouldn't be making decisions to do stuff on behalf of the entire council, for one. And we should have the language clearly earmarked for residents, what we say to them. And I'll, I'll agree with what Stacy was saying is that I, I do, although I think it was his responsibility to take the tree down. I think given that we didn't, uh, have all our act together, that we should consider waiving maybe the, the fees, the, the, uh, penalty fees. I'll put that out there.
I have something else to say.
Open to a reduction.
And I'm gonna propose that, but as what both of you said, I'm gonna propose that to start, as a start.
I have something else to say.
Go ahead.
Um, as we outline our appealing process, I think we should differentiate. If something is deemed eminently dangerous and a safety issue, I don't think we should appeal it.
Right, that's what's wrong.
I think that should be different. That should be very different from, so it just seems like we clearly need a process in place because this situation was not our best work. But this, we should not be having.
Since we knew that it was imminent danger, I mean, I, like, maybe not imminent that day, but like, really dangerous.
Yeah, but it's not outlined. I mean, it's not written down, so we need to improve that on our end.
I would just, I, I would caution us from doing that. I think from a due process perspective, we should allow an appeal process. Anytime we're considering impacting someone's property or imposing any kind of fee or penalty. That is kind of the cornerstone of, of jurisprudence. So again, anytime we're gonna be, um, impacting, whether it's real property or finances. We should do that. The, the bigger issue is the aspect of providing notice. And how much notice we can provide in advance of, of making decisions. So under the traditional nuisance abatement procedures that we currently have in place. Under typical nuisances, so, um, noises and weeds and things of that nature. We have to provide advanced notice to a property owner. If it's something that we think constitutes enough of an emergency that we have to act very, very quickly. The municipal code says that we have to at least attempt to contact the property owner before taking action. We don't have a parallel, um, requirement in the heritage tree ordinance. And I think that's the problem that we had with this. So we need to create some sort of a parallel procedure so that we don't trip our, trip over ourselves. Um, and maybe we just cite back to the nuisance abatement code, or maybe we create something, but that was. Um, that was the problem here, is that we were trying to enact some sort of fair process. But it wasn't perfectly executed because we didn't really have anything to govern a way forward. And we can do better and we will do better next time.
Excellent.
Well, I, I, I mean, in response to what Stacy brought up, I think that we, um, should. Allow an appeal in any case, but it's not an appeal of the decision to abate. It would then be an appeal of the costs. Um, but if we determine that there's an unsafe, sufficiently unsafe situation. We have to go forward irregardless and that doesn't take away someone's appeal rights. I, I think we, I think that's essentially what Mona's saying.
Exactly, that's exactly.
So I, I would say that there's three problems here. I think one problem that is obvious that's been addressed is. That Mr. Foster was informed that there was an appeal and that exactly the, the process for that appeal isn't clear. And he wasn't followed up with. To clearly indicate, if you don't remove this tree, we're going to remove it and it's going to be at your cost. Now, I do think he was informed all the way along that if he doesn't remove the tree, we're going to remove it and it's going to be at his cost. So I, I, I don't think that issue, which he raises as the issue of raisins wood should be included. As Middlefield is, I don't even know what that means, but we're not, there's no difference between Ravenswood and. Fair Oaks Lane. It's just a different road and. Whether somebody's assessment of whether something's busy or not is not what's relevant. What's relevant is that. The right-of-way is the responsibility of the property owner. It always has been. It's very, very clear that it is. If there's something different in Middlefield, maybe we should look at that. I'm not sure what that is, but that's not relevant to me, to this case. I think. The, the first error is. He got a good contract to have that tree removed, but he never informed the town that he had a contract to have the tree removed. And he should have done that. That's an error. I think that the fact that we don't have that appeal process laid out clearly adversely impacted him and was unfair to him. And I think then there's been lots of discussion about needing to correct that. And the third thing is we had a council member that got involved in a. A city management issue that is the city staff's responsibility and not a council member's responsibility. And that led to some implications that were in air. So I guess I think. The right thing, I mean, the biggest, one of those three problems is that we weren't informed that he had a contract. Because I think if we had been informed that he had a contract, we would have said, well, then remove the tree. And because essentially we had said, remove the tree, right? He, he got a notice. That if he didn't remove the tree, we were going to remove it at his cost. So. I'd, I mean, I'm comfortable. Reducing the fee by removing the administrative component of the fee.
And how much is that?
It's like twelve.
A little over a thousand dollars, I think. And maybe it's fifteen hundred dollars.
Total amount that.
So I don't know. Mona had said that there was. An opportunity for the appellant to rebut. Is there still?
Wait a minute, let's, let's.
It's one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, drops the cost to five thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Instead of seven thousand.
I would be comfortable with that.
I think that's, I think that's. A reasonable amount of to. Take away because of the cost of removing the tree, especially in that. Heightened emergency situation, you always pay more when it's an emergency situation than if it's.
Well, maybe we should find out who the, the arborist is that he contacted. It'd be a better deal than the one we worked.
Sure. Okay. Sure. Go.
Councilmember, the reason I didn't offer to pay is, you know, I don't think any. Logically, I don't want to pay if you all are going to pay. So, yeah, I had the contract in case you denied my appeal. But yeah, I mean, that's why I didn't bring it up because it looked like. I was going to hopefully get included in the Middlefield zone. What the Middlefield zone is, is Sally, or someone explained to me. Sally's team maintains all the trees on Middlefield. Even though it's the public right of way, but they don't do it on Ravenswood. That's, so that's that, but I, let's, I don't want to bug you with that.
True? Yeah, but wait a minute.
Can I say something or?
Because I'm, I want to say something too.
Go ahead.
Well, well, actually Sally, hold on a second. Mayor Hawkins, Ben Willian, I think that we should allow the appellant to complete. His portion, close the public hearing, then have Sally respond and just take it one step at a time.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll be one more minute. So, yeah, so, and you know, I'm not trying to get Lisa Marie Daly. She's been great to me and. But the last statement I heard from her was currently the case is on hold. There will be no further code enforcement. Happy Thanksgiving. That's the last I heard. So I'm sitting there hoping for weeks and weeks that you all are going to. Maintain that strip finally, and that's why I never moved forward. So, yeah, hopefully for others, we fix that appeal thing because. I mean, in this case, it didn't work. I don't know how the appeals work in other circumstances. I mean, if it's always like this. But it, it didn't work in this case. I think we know that now. So, yeah, so I guess I would just only ask, I was ready, willing and able to pay. As painful as it was, and that was a thirty-four hundred dollar charge. I spent two days getting three to four bids and it was a lot of work. So I just don't see why I should pay fifty-seven fifty when I was totally lined up everything for thirty-four hundred. So, thank you.
Sally, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak real quickly on, on public trees. So we only maintain the trees in front of the historic wall on Middlefield Way, and that's because. The residents are all the way up on Hawthorne. And so it would be hard for them to maintain trees in that pathway. And so that's the only reason we maintain trees just on the, the right side of Middlefield, the high school side. That's the only. Trees we maintain. We do not maintain trees anywhere in Atherton in front of somebody's property. We only maintain trees in medians on Al Camino, the park, the town center and that one part of Middlefield. So. It would be a whole nother conversation if you wanted to open up additional residential streets to be. To have the town maintained. And I just also wanted to say that. Mr. Foster's neighbor also had a dangerous tree at one eighty-five Ravenswood this year. And so Lisa and I worked with this person to either remove or prune their tree and this person received. They got a permit and they, they removed the tree with their own dime. So I don't even think there's any more trees on Ravenswood for us to maintain. So. Just wanted to give you that information. Thank you.
Thank goodness. Elizabeth, did you have something you want to say?
So we're going to close public hearing, she said, and bring it back to.
Okay, we're going to close public hearing and bring it back to council.
Okay, so. What was I going to say? I was going to make a point and, and then Sally clarified that the trees along Middlefield. There are no houses that really face Middlefield. And if you're talking about the trees along the Lindenwood wall, exactly what she was saying. So, and then there's the school and there's really, you know, that's probably what was, that's what I was going to say.
There's lots of trees along Middlefield from.
No.
Beyond that, that, that come, as you come down like at Marsh Road and.
No, that people's backyards back up to it. So there's no houses that face Middlefield that would have that front facing. Right away. There's maybe two or three right there at Oak Road, at Glenwood.
Down near Jennings.
Okay.
There's a couple of houses facing Middlefield and they maintain the trees.
I think that. The situation, it, it's unfortunate that. The homeowner delayed removing. Something that he and the town arborists had deemed a dangerous tree. No matter, and even if he got a. Permit, he didn't act on it. And so I think that. Our, our shortcomings are that we did not notify him like the night before or the day before, but in, in this emergency situation. That we were taking it down, but we had given him every opportunity to do it. The appeal process was kind of nebulous. He thought that he was clear to keep the dangerous tree up until some other decision was made. I feel that. Waiving our administrative fees or other penalties is a step in the right direction, but the cost of removing the tree. Should be paid by the homeowner.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
May I make some findings into the record then, before you make the motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, so it sounds like based on the council's deliberation. That the council has found that. The property, the property owner is responsible for the tree that was within the right-of-way adjacent to his property located at one seventy-five Ravenswood Avenue. And as such, he is responsible for the cost of the town's removal of the tree. However, because of staff's failure to provide him with notice of the removal. Immediately prior to that, the town council would like to waive the administrative cost. Associated with the removal such that the property owner will only have to pay for the actual cost of. The tree removal and that will amount to five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, so moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Judicial review of this decision is governed by section. Ten ninety-four point six of the California Code of Civil Procedure. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item number seven, award of contract for professional services in the completion of community survey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's recommended that the council award a professional services contract to Probowski Research. For an amount up to nineteen thousand dollars. Direct the city attorney to prepare that contract. And authorize the city manager to execute contract on behalf of the town. As you recall, the council authorized the release of an RFP back in February. To conduct a broad community survey beginning in early twenty twenty-five with the goals to measure the general attitude of residents toward town services and programs. Determine residents' priorities and areas of concern and receive feedback on key policy issues and priorities. The initial survey would include questions that could be used as a benchmark for future surveys. And the town could consider conducting future surveys on a multi-year cycle. Input from the community helps the town better understand the community, inform budgetary priorities and identify infrastructure needs. The town received seven responses to the RFP and after review of the responses, two were selected to interview. The city council subcommittee, Mayor Hawkins, Ben Willian and Vice Mayor Lewis and staff interviewed the top two respondents. After the interview, the subcommittee and staff recommend that city council award a contract to Probowski Research in the amount of nineteen thousand. Probowski's research will involve collaboration with staff to determine most cost-effective, reasonable and productive survey methodology. Questions would be developed in concert with the city council subcommittee, staff and representatives from the town's key stakeholder groups, including but not limited to. Town committees, town designated groups such as the Art Foundation, ADAPT, Rail, Tree, Senior Group, et cetera. And any ad hoc community organizations that might be stakeholders to the town such as homeowners associations, Lindenwood, Lindenwood Association, et cetera. Once input from those groups is consolidated, Probowski Research will work with the subcommittee and staff to finalize survey questions. And Probowski Research recommends that preserving the integrity of the survey, it's recommended that they maintain control over the survey implement. And that it not be pre-released at a public meeting. The survey is not intended to be released until twenty twenty-five. And what them maintaining control of the survey implement essentially means is we would not be just sending out the survey via. Instagram and Facebook and other town social media. They would be controlling the mechanism under which it's released in order to maintain the validity of the survey. So that concludes the staff report. Staff's open to any questions. I don't know if there's anybody online or in the room from Probowski Research. But then the subcommittee is here as well. And essentially this was within my signature authority, but we brought it to the council just for a council conversation around it. I don't think so.
Can you clarify a little bit about them controlling the mechanism of. All the responses and how we won't be putting it out on social media or our email channels?
Oh, no, no.
We'll be alerting the community to a survey.
Okay.
To watch their mailbox for a survey or to watch their email for a survey.
There won't be any online.
But it's not going to be, you know, go visit the town website, here's a QR code.
Like Survey Monkey or anything like that.
Nothing like that.
Let me, can I?
Sure.
So what they want to do is they want to prevent any kind of spamming or, you know. Hacking the responses with an open-ended survey. They want to make sure that the survey is clean, the responses are clean and validated. But they will be using social media and Instagram and all kinds of social mail and phone, all kinds of different techniques like that.
So is this not an online survey then? Sorry, I'm just, um, for the more digital people who made me want to do this on their phone. Are they going to be able to do that?
Yes.
They'll have several, the respondents will have several means of completing the survey. They could, they could do it online. They could get a mailed survey. They could do a phone survey. Probowski is open to doing that in any means necessary to capture the results they need.
And because the goal is to verify that everyone who's participating is exclusively an Atherton resident?
Atherton resident and of a, a sufficient level of demographic. A match so that they can get some statistically valid results.
So how are they going to verify someone's an Atherton resident?
They, they have. Well, I, I guess verification is a, is a strong one, but they're, they're, they have address information, they have contact information, they have access to research information, they can. I think they were saying on the, on the phone, we, we know where you shop, we know where you, you park your car, we know where you go to school, we know all of those things. And so we can reach you and say that you are an Atherton resident and we know what demographic you are. So they, they have access to all that information.
And the other thing is they, they want to make sure that they get a blend. And so, I mean, they're looking towards getting maybe two hundred, three hundred responses. And if it all comes back in this one homogeneous band, they will continue to. Survey in order to get more diverse responses. So it's just not weighted one way or another. We, we like them a lot. Probowski. And the other survey that a company. Was more of a national firm, a big, big firm. And it seemed like they kind of farmed out most of their phone. Surveys and it cost like twice as much. So we just felt really good about the team of the Probowski group. Very. Creative and they all seem very energetic and able to work. So we liked them. So. That's who we.
So they buy databases? So they, it's not just the voter registration, but they buy databases right down to so. As to further what Elizabeth was saying, if they find that they're missing a specific demographic, they'll literally call people on their cell phone. And then do it over the phone if they want to, or they'll send you a QR code. You know, you'll get a thing in the mail. So you can get it, you can do it any different way. It's a multimodal. Approach, which was interesting. And it's a way to get at elderly and some of the people that are not. Online as well as doing it for those who want to do it on your phone or your computer. Yeah.
I have two questions. One is, it looks like the proposal is for nineteen thousand dollars. It went, when I looked through their. Material, that's targeting a four hundred person response because they offered three hundred versus four hundred different pricing. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And. The only thing that jumps out at me. Doesn't make any sense. Is in their demographic information, which is on. Page one eighty-eight of one ninety-five, the town of Atherton resident analysis. I actually think that. The Asian Pacific Islander percentage is more than twenty percent. I think it's closer to thirty percent, but. They could prove me wrong, but what I'm certain is wrong is that. The percentage of Atherton. Residents who are renters is thirty-eight percent. There's no possible way. That, that I just can't understand. I mean, I know we have a lot of ADUs that were really guaranteed we're going to rent. And.
I want to take that number.
Yeah.
And I know that when we do.
We're going to submit this to HCD.
Exactly. But.
I think it's your tissue.
It's my pen.
There you go.
They have, they have a number of databases that they're getting. They have, they have a number of databases that they're getting data, and it may not match the American Community Survey data that we get.
But I'm just saying, I, I would ask them at some point, because did you ask them about that number in the course of your review of them? Cuz that.
We didn't ask them about the renter percentage.
Cuz they show sixty two and thirty eight.
Yeah, we did ask them how they are going to get at absentee owners. And so they, they spoke to that, to the subcommittee, but we didn't ask them about the percentage.
One, one of the other things that came up is that they typically offer a second language, and it's usually Spanish. So in this case, we either can opt to do no language, but there may be an additional, I don't remember this one. But if we did, the problem was which, we have statistics on Asian, but we don't know a specific what language.
I think it's a variety. I mean, Asian is a broad term.
Exactly, that's my point. So if you were gonna pick another language.
And, and they, they.
Spanish should be the second language because more.
The percentage is so small, it's not worth doing.
My, well, don't do it.
It would, and to your point, Madam Mayor, it was the same answer that they gave for the Asian language, that it was a small number of households that, yes, they spoke an Asian language, but they predominantly also spoke English. And, and the percentage was so small that the cost to add that additional language.
The statistic that they gave that was interesting is they looked at the number of people that had actually requested a other language ballot. And Chinese was the biggest number of the, of our bucket of Asian was Chinese. But even so, I'm not sure it's.
Was it more that requested Chinese than Spanish, I wonder?
Yes.
In our community, yes.
Yes, in our community.
In our community, Spanish is very small here, so I, it seems like we almost shouldn't bother with a second language.
It was in the double digits, in terms of the number of requests. That's interesting.
So do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
We'd add one more.
Oh.
Go ahead.
The data only has people over eighteen. Are we going to be surveying younger people? We have a youth coalition advisory group. Do we?
We could add them as a, as a group that gets consulted, because as George was saying, we're gonna consult some of our different groups. So we could clearly, and that's actually a very good idea, I think, very good idea to add them.
I think to put them in as one of the stakeholder groups, as, as Mary's mentioning. But they also offered to, for the same dollar amount, come and do a small focus group with a, with a group, just, just that group if they, if we wanted them to.
Yeah, so.
I think as, as the questions evolve and the subcommittees meet, some of that's gonna be called out of that.
Yeah. Are there any public questions or comments or? Anybody online, Anthony?
I'd like to make a motion that we award the contract for professional services for the community service, survey to the Probowlski group. And for the survey to be released in twenty twenty five.
I'll second that. Okay, so.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye. Yeah, okay, all right, okay, so, motion passes. Okay, do we have any? Do we have any report outs or any other things anybody wants to say?
Not this time.
Nope. Okay.
Good turnout at coffee with a cop today.
Yeah.
That was excellent. Yeah, thank you for that.
It was very well attended.
Yeah, very nice.
All right, thank you, Jean. And Lisa, I, I think I missed her. I had to leave.
Your turn.
Good night, thank you.
Thanks, Mona.